Did we have a packet for today?
Your life.
All right. Call this, uh, meeting special workshop, workshop, uh, to order at 6:00 PM on November the 6th here in the town of Weddington. Do I need to, we can jump kind of right into it, or?
Need a motion to adopt the, I may, I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Do we have an agenda?
Yeah.
Yeah.
D nine seventeen. It's basically, it's basically a workshop.
That's what I was, I didn't see one of those. So awesome.
We did have, uh, some info from the meeting on the 27th that you had in that packet that we wanted to discuss, right? Those, you had some, uh.
We did have some other stuff.
I have, uh, I have information from the past two planning board meetings, uh, a packet specifically available for reference.
Okay.
Uh, for instance.
What are we going to discuss besides just nine seventeen E?
Basically, all right. So we got a motion for adoption of agenda. We get a second?
A second.
Second, all in favor. Aye, unanimous. All right. Determination of a quorum. Uh, say we do now as we're on a short board. So I'd say we got a determination. Move into the workshop regarding UDO section D nine one seven E additional specific requirements for conventional residential developments. Uh, Greg, if you want to just give us a brief rundown real quick.
Uh, yes, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. Um, so this discussion of D nine seventeen E, which in layman's terms is the requirements for new conventional subdivision applications. A being applied to everyone, B being applied to conservation subdivisions, C being commercial, D being et cetera, et cetera. Uh, we discussed this in the past couple of meetings. Uh, Bill's provided some good feedbacks on text amendments he would like to put into this requirement. Uh, in our last, uh, scheduled meeting, uh, this was on the agenda. It was actually a special call meeting and this was on the agenda and it was determined that this should be more fleshed out into a workshop, which is our purpose here tonight. So no business will be conducted tonight. No votes will be taken tonight. This is simply a workshop to discuss this particular topic. This whole UDO section nine seventeen is basically talking about the requirements for new applications or new subdivisions that come to town. So this is independent to be, this isn't a checklist. But these are things that people should do, uh, when they're aiming to develop uh, new residential communities within Weddington. Uh, for example, our previous standard was 10% for developments. Now it's 20%. And so this new section is to kind of balance out, okay, how do we got to do 20%? What are the other things we're asking for and what concessions we can make? The subcommittee has met on this before and we adopted this new section nine seven D E. Uh, it's roughly borrowed from conservation side. And again, the, the major objective of this section is to not infringe on property rights of long time property owners, small lots, other things. These are things that should just apply to new applications.
And this is six lots or more, correct?
That's, that's correct. Uh, and so, well, it's actually greater than six lots.
Six lot, seven.
Seven lots.
Seven lots.
Yeah, which, yeah, that comes up often. That's good clarification. And so, you know, we hold this strict standard to conservation type subdivisions. Uh, it kind of made it and conventional subdivisions. For example, because a lot of the streets are going to be up on kind of these areas unbuildable and unbuildable. They let you in advance, uh, by segment of this area. Uh, this is the last thing I've noted. This is a great example of a code section in the UDO that could use visual aid. That could show an example of this is what we want shown. This area is buildable. This area is unbuildable. This area is your yield. We've had confusion over that in applications. We've had manipulation of that in application future looking forward. Um, so I think that's one of the things we'd like to shore up is, you know, what are we looking for as an exhibit that's included in your packet that they can show, uh, that complies with this section? All that said, this is a workshop. This is a discussion. Please be loose about conversing back and forth. You don't have to, you know, make a motion or anything like that. This is a workshop. We're not making any assumptions today.
Awesome. Thank you, Greg. One thing before I start, can I borrow one of those pins?
Yes.
I came ill prepared. Thank you. You need a pen, Scott?
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. You need some paper?
Speaking of a visual, okay, great. I'm a super visual guy. I know in the subcommittee got together and we talked about this, you know, we were drawing pictures, this and that. I got with Greg because I just, I didn't feel the way it was written up. It was real clear. So Greg, I kind of drew this and that and I said, am I looking at this right? Kind of got a head nod. So I created a visual to see if.
The, the visual matches the intent of what the words are saying.
Or if, so everyone understands the intent is right, if this is the intent, and I think that would help us. So what I've done, and I apologize to the people out there. I'll pass it out once we're done. But this is an example and correct me if I'm wrong. This is a 20 acre parcel. Okay? It's got, um, steep cliffs. That's what that is. Greater than 25% steep slopes. Uh, this is a flood plain. Here's a creek that comes into a pond. So basically what it says, this is not buildable land. So it says, all right, of our 20 acre parcel, we've got four acres, I'm making up these numbers here, that are not buildable or what we were calling in the ordinance, primary conservation subdivision or primary conservation land. Basically unbuildable land. So if we looked at this and then we're saying, okay, I got my 20 acre parcel. Here's my primary, basically unbuildable land. So I've got 16 acres of buildable land. If it's, if it's a conditional subdivision, actually if it's either subdivision, my yield plan would come out of these 16 acres. So keeping it simple, 16 acres, 16 homes. All right. It's going to be less than that by the time you get roads and stuff. So if it's, um, my conservation subdivision, again, getting simple, I'm, I'm gonna basically say, and this is an oversimplification, here's eight acres. Here's eight acres and I can put 16 homes over here. 20,000 foot average square lot, uh, lot, 18, but it has to average up to 20. And then this becomes conservation. And conversely, if this was a, uh, R40 subdivision.
They get to use all that.
They.
Put 16 houses on everything.
They put 16 houses on all of this. So that was the concept, right? Correct me if I'm wrong. That's the concept we were coming with, but I just didn't feel, um, you guys want to look at that, pass it around, I'm happy to leave it with you. Um, I just didn't feel the, because I was trying to, to read the ordinance. I just didn't feel it was coming through clearly. So that's what I talked to Greg about. And, um, I tried to take a shot at some changes on the nine seventeens, but when I did it, only where it referred to open space and conservation land.
So, and so the difference too was that an open space, whereas RCD, the primary conservation, they still had to give open space outside of that, which is where you dedicate. This one does not. That open spa, that primary conservation can count as their percentage and they can build in the good land. They didn't have to come back in that good land and give, give an additional 20% because they gave whatever primary was out of the unconventional.
To me, that was another question when we, when the, actually the council up that 10% to 20%, you know, I'm thinking, okay.
That's got to affect the yield.
Does that really have a real impact on the conservation lands?
If there's not enough.
Especially if you, you've got primary and you're saying, hey, we're taking this off the table to begin with.
Correct. Whereas in conventional, that could have been part of their property. That could have been in someone's backyard. The property lot, yes, correct. So we were trying to align the goals of RCD to say, let's just get, pull that land out. But in our, in conventional, they would be allowed to use that towards their common open space calc. Since they're pulling it out, we're not invest, not taking their property rights away. We're just going to go ahead and pull it out, build on good land, make lots on good land. And then if it doesn't meet that 20%, they have to find the additional somewhere else, but they're automatically are going to put that into.
So if you start, if you start from a blank slate of all good land, all buildable land, no, no.
Steep slopes or anything.
Nothing, right? Then you have to pull the 20% out and then do the yield.
Correct.
If you have land that you can't build on, and if it's 20% or more, that should count as the open space.
In conventional.
In conventional.
I feel like that should, because the goal was not to make those lots where it could be lots traditionally, uh, to just make lots to get an extra lot back there and then.
Yeah, because on the example there, the 20 acres and four of it is primary conservation. That's 20%.
Yeah, you've, you've met the.
So that's their, that, that covers their, their open space.
Then they got the 16 acres of buildable good land to put quality lots on.
Right.
And, uh, whatever road network, whatever needed to through, instead of giving up that additional other half, whereas RCD would have half of that to put their lots at 20,000. The conventional still has to stick to the, the, the big lots, but they just get the bigger land.
Yeah, conventional is pretty, conventional, I think is pretty straightforward. It's the R, it's the RCD now. And then when you have to look at what is considered primary conservation and secondary conservation and the tiering system that, you know, you're going to use to determine that.
And you used to be able to, if you could carve out, depending on where you were in the UDO, 9,000 square foot or 10,000 square foot spot for it to.
To build on.
Build on. You could have a flood plain.
Whole nine yards in there, yep.
Steep slopes on your property. And now we're saying, no, you can't. So that's generally the concept, I think.
Yes. And, and so, and you'll, and you'll probably see more unbuildable land now in the conventional subdivisions because of that, because they were go, they were bringing those lots into, you know, potential wetland, you know, just a little bit of it, right? So now you can't do it anymore. So you, you're going to get more of that, uh, land that's unbuildable in the conventional zone, uh, which could account for the 20%.
Yeah, the, uh, so, so again, in conventional, I felt like we were reading something that was confusing everybody. And when you try, in the conventional, when we tried to articulate it at that one meeting, we had a hard time, uh, articulating. I'm reading the common open space. It's 20%, no more to 50%.
Is that on the nine seventeen A?
It's go to B. Yeah, nine seventeen E.
Oh.
Additional.
Okay.
For conventional and go to B and read open space.
You said D?
Yeah, I think it might be this not more than 50% of that minimum required area of open space shall be comprised of wetlands, submerged lands, steep slopes. So in that case, in Bill's thing, we only get to use half of that.
Yeah. And.
Cause it.
What, and what was the reasoning for that?
I don't know. I really think that we should be able, I really think the goal was meant to align with pulling it out and putting it into conservation and not be a, not conservation, putting it in a common open space. So it wasn't going to be part of the lot.
Right.
Then all lots that would be delivered to a new resident were going to be quality lots. Uh, so maybe that's where our hiccup was, was not more than that 50% because then, then I feel close that we might be stepping on.
Yeah, you're cutting into.
Homeowner's. Yeah, I mean, you just.
Do it on land.
Because you're going to have to give 10% of good land now and you gave up more.
Let's, let's give an example of a site that has, uh, 20% of the land is flood plain. Under this rule, you're saying, okay, you got to set aside 10% of that is flood plain, then another 10% of flood plain has to be on somebody's private lot. Because you're restricted on how much common open space can be.
In.
By these factors.
Correct.
Yeah, but I mean, we, we, we're not allowing any flood plain.
So read B.
Right.
And the second sentence, not more than 50% of the minimum required area of open space shall be comprised of wetlands, submerged lands, steep slope flood plains. So to his point, the, uh.
That's D nine seventeen B?
E.
Oh, E.
E, yep. Which is why I think we were.
Or is that primary conservation land?
No, it's D nine seventeen E is additional specific requirements for conventional residential subdivisions or major subdivisions.
A is everybody, B is conservation, et cetera, et cetera. E is conventional.
Yeah.
This is our new section.
And we were saying, you know, we're not going to punish any citizen here. Joe Weddington gets to do what he wants on A.
Yeah, yeah.
But if, if anyone comes in and takes Joe Weddington's land and goes seven lots or greater.
Develop it.
Yeah. We wanted this to align with some of the goals that RCD had had with pulling out the bad land so that it just wasn't being able to create lots on it.
Yeah, I think that was an important statement, but a couple of weeks ago, uh, we got several of our, uh, councilmen elect in the audience. We kind of described that as for profit language or. And, you know, for profits that were going to be developed versus. A big private homestead.
That owns the land he wants to.
Of the gross acreage.
Acreage and gross acreage.
It's the total tract.
Okay.
So the total tract's 20 acres.
Yeah, of the tract will be required to retain as common open space, not more than 50%
The wetlands.
Of the minimum required area of open space shall be comprised of wetlands.
Not thinking conventional, we want to go ahead and put that as common open space.
Yeah. In the conventional section, we.
Oh, this is.
In, in the conservation section, excuse me, we, we changed this from basically 50% to zero. Said if it's, um, if it's challenging lands, it's got to go into public lands. And then with this, we want, same with challenging lands to be kind of common open space, HOA maintains lands and not have them on private property. The idea of this 50%, which was the original, another one is saying like, we're, we shouldn't reward you for building something you weren't going to build on anyway. You should have some of that common open space be, uh, and they were green or, you know, common open space or a buffer around the property, areas that you, um, could have built on, but by not building on, let's say there was a row of evergreens on the side of property that you would normally just wipe out to make it be private backyard. You're saying, let's set aside some of that as common open space. Let's make that as a buffer between the neighborhoods, uh, et cetera, et cetera. So there's.
And.
There's a rationale behind.
That will be the case in, in, in a lot that has no, you know, no deep slopes, no, no, you know, it's got all buildable land.
If it's 20 acres of pure.
Come up with 20% of something to put aside.
Correct. But they would have to at that point. And even if it's the farmland, they would have to plant to get to some type of common open space.
Right. So I mean, it all depends on the land really and what's out there.
And since the conservation section was written, which we know was based on Randall Art's, you know, consultation and advice to the town, uh, several years ago, um, we've made a significant advance in our tree ordinance. And we have literally doubled the amount of open spaces required for these developments. So there are some, you know, shifts in, in language that, that impact the original language. That may say, okay, these, these things settle out, but, um, per the discussion we've had already, you know, there's some maybe confusion about how much we want to apply this to new development. If, you know, if they already have to set aside 20% of open space, what are we actually asking them for? What are we asking them to demonstrate us that they're planning for? So I think that's what we want to get to. What deliverable do we want from these for profit developers?
So in Bill's illustration, he would, he would only be able to use half of what's not buildable as his common open space. So he had four acres. He can only use two of that, which means two acres within the buildable area has to go into common open space. Correct?
Correct. Per as written out. And I don't think that is what the real intent of doing a normal big lot, uh, subdivision was meant to be.
See, what, what I was trying to do, I found a counter E was saying is at a minimum 20%. And I said, the adjusted tract acreage. So I'm saying that, that.
You got to give another 20% on the eight acres on eight acres. I would not ever be in part of that for a regular conventional subdivision. Of the 16.
Not 20% on the 20 acres.
Right.
Because this, you know.
So you're going to pull that out of a homeowner's land. Then you're going to tell them they got to do 20% additional on the 16 for a conventional subdivision.
Yeah, but aren't we saying that this could count towards that?
Right now it counts 50%.
Yeah, but you're saying with the adjusted tract yield, that would not, because the adjusted tract definition says pull all that out. Give us the area you have left in, in RCD. And now you've got to start meeting our 20%.
So that's definition of adjusted tract yield is really just for conservation.
That was my understanding.
Yeah.
But we wanted to align the conventional to pull out the bad land instead of it just being, but not necessarily penalize them on the common open space part.
Because like I was saying, the yield plan, whether conventional or RCD would be the, would be the same.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. Cause the RCD is in, in theory is doing a yield plan per our conventional.
Right.
Layout. So, so yes, whereas before you've seen where their yield plan can go into the bad lands and they just show how many lots they're getting. Um, so I would be in favor of removing that second sentence. And then a good trade off would be asking them to just take the bad lands and, and to Steve's point, I don't think we're always going to get our whole complete 20% in wasted land. But when we do have bad land, just go ahead and give him credit, pull it aside. Don't put it in someone's lot. And then let him start putting on those 16 acres. He can put his 16 homes.
So you're saying take out basically that second sentence?
Yeah, for the, for the E, nine seventeen E, take out the second sentence where we're not going to make him give. Pull out all that land and then go get more good land.
Okay, well.
Think our goal is to just make sure they're using good land.
Yeah. From the previous.
That's from the previous meeting. Yeah, that's in the meeting.
I know there was a problem because I printed something on the back of the page and Karen, when she ran copy, she didn't realize that. But then you sent out, here, look, look at that. See, I think that's what you're saying on B, where I, I blinded out the whole second sentence. I'm not sure.
This is the D nine seventeen E, right? A B one.
Yeah, it's, well, you've just, instead of gross acreage, you're wanting to use the adjusted tract acreage yield.
Yeah, I don't think you can use that for, uh, convention.
So at a minimum, 20% of the adjusted tract acreage yield of the tract will be required to be retained as common open space. And adjusted track yield definition was pull out all the bad land.
All the primary conservation.
Then that's what you had for your yield. So you're going to say, pull out his four acres. Now give another 16 acres, 20% in that needs to be common open space. So you're going to give four acres plus additional 20% of good land in the common open space.
Oh, okay. Well, what I was thinking is you got your 20 acre tract and maybe it's just, I'll say coincidence that four of that is bad land. And so 20%, if we take 20% of the gross parcel, that's four acres, I was saying 20%.
Of the adjusted.
Of the adjusted, which would be 3.2 acres of open space.
And I would be good if you wanted to, to word that, but still giving credit for the land you're pulling out, because we don't know how much of the land, oh, when you do the gross, you'll know how much we're pulling out.
Yeah.
Uh, and it needs to be in common open space, not in someone's lot.
So a question for you, Bill. Are you saying that instead of having the four acres be the required, it would only be the three points, something?
In this, in this example.
Right, but it's, it's the 20, it's, you don't, you, you add, you, you take it out, but you add it back in. So you're, you're figuring out the common open space on the buildable area. But if, but if it's, but if the bad land is greater than that, then that's what it is.
And your percentage instead of 20 might be 30.
No, no, no.
Yeah, because his 20, if he's saying that adjusted tract is 3.2 acres, but you're giving four, you gave more than 20% of 3.2 acres. You gave 35% of your adjusted tract. You're counting all the bad land.
Yes.
But, but if it were, if it ended up being something shy, that it actually.
If it was shy, you just have to add.
Add it somewhere else. Correct. But the adjusted yield would be favorable to the developer. If you get to count the primary as common open space and he's only going to do his calcs off of pulling it out of the adjusted versus the gross. Cause if gross was four acres, right? Then his adjusted is 3.2, but he's still giving four acres of common open space. We're well over 20% in our calcs for development data. So it would be given the developer a hand up to use the adjusted track yield to quantify his 20% he needs to give. Cause if he was given 3.2 acres on this total tract due to the adjusted tract, but he gave four, well over, he would come in saying, hey, I'm giving 32% open space on this project.
What would that do for him?
Not, just look like he's giving more than the ordinance says. You know, if you were minimum is 20% and I come in and say, look, I'm giving 50%, I'm giving 40% on a conventional.
Sure.
It would look good for a developer.
But it doesn't, I mean, it doesn't affect the building, correct?
Correct. Doesn't affect the build. So nor does the gross. You're still getting some type of, of yield, uh, coming out. 20% whether it comes out of the adjusted yield, which is the, his, in his case, 16 acres, or it comes out of the gross. It's just a calculation number. What's 20% being taken from?
All right. So if you had, let's say 10% primary or unbuildable, that'd be two acres. Then you got 18 acres. My thinking was your 20% applies to that 18 acres, which is 3.2.
Additional to the primary?
No.
Yes.
See, I, I would not, I would not be in favor.
I think you're misspeaking. It's not additional. You're talking about just having that be what he has to come out.
Yes.
Yeah, I think what you guys are saying, my latest example, 3.8 acres. But he's already, we've already taken, well, in that example.
You gave four acres out of 20.
We took two acres off the table. I'm using a 10% example.
Yes. So, so if instead of that being, instead of the colored area that Bill's grandchild drew, um.
Unbuildable land.
It's two, it's two acres instead of four. So that gives you 18.
Right.
So now he's got to come out with 3.6. So it's the two acres of unbuildable land plus 1.6.
Okay.
Is that?
I'm fine with that. I just, that's what I'm trying to get clarity around.
If there's, if there's 20% of unbuildable land, he's good, right? On, in conservation. If it's less than 20% of unbuildable, he's got to come up with, he's got to make it up to 20%.
Right.
With, with buildable land.
But we're not going to penalize him in a conventional.
In a conventional.
Yeah, for having the bad land. RCD, we don't want them to use that land to get their credits to get yield plan. Because then that yield plan comes in and they get eight more lots because they put lots in it.
And we're putting eight halves.
And they're 20,000. Yeah, everybody in Weddington would love you to say, we're going to have neighborhood that's got one acre lots. That's not, I can't imagine we're going to have, but when there's 20,000 and they got additional six or seven lots because of how you can math it, I think that becomes a little, little hairy. But this is conventional, big lots.
Yeah, we want, that's what we want. So.
Yeah. So if he couldn't, if the bad land becomes their common open space, that's great. I guess it would just be coming back. Do you want to use adjusted track or gross? Gross track. And in that situation, I think I would just make it as simple as possible. If you've got gross land, 100 acres, 10 acres, five acres, whatever it is, you got to set aside 20%. If you've got 20% of bad land, well, great. If you don't. If you don't, you gotta still come up with whatever it is.
But now you still have to, you still gonna have to determine if it's conservation land, right?
Well, it's not conservation, it'd just be primary.
Right.
But it'd be going into.
Unbuildable land.
Yeah, steep slopes, rock outcrop, stuff we, floodplain, creeks.
But this is for a convent, we're talking.
Conventional only. Yep, an R40.
But if we're, if we're trying to align things with pulling out the primary in RCD. So that a developer can read it the same, should we, should we then be pulling out of this too and doing it off of the adjusted as opposed to the, the full lot?
Or do you mean give, in a conservation subdivision, give them credit for this towards the 50?
No, he's saying do the adjusted in conventional and give them the credit of lesser land to pull 20% off of, in pulling the bad land out.
Right. I mean, we're, it, it's apples, it's apples to apples.
I agree with you.
It's just, it's a matter of whether we want it to look like it aligns with RCD as you have to pull out the unbuildable area first. And then we figure everything off of that.
I think that would make it simple, simpler or clearer. Cause it's kind of a similar type process. It just applies to.
I actually think it would be simpler just looking at 100 acres and saying, okay, 20%. But if we.
Doesn't align.
But if we want it to align with RCD, then I think we need to figure out how to make it, how to pull out that, but make it not impact the.
They still get to use it back towards their calculations.
So, so I think, and again, I'm, I'm, I, I think you're, I think I understand what you're, what you're saying is that. You don't, you, you, you take the unbuildable land out as far as calculating. What, as far as calculating the, the percentage that you have, that you have to set aside. But that can be a part of that percentage once you figure that out.
Yep. It can't be built on. It, it's gonna not be part of a lot, be kinda just pushed out. But in conventional, they retroactively get to bring it back to their calculation. Whereas RCD, that's where they would split. It doesn't. And again, to Greg's point, I think this is gonna be a couple pages of pictures and kind of a step by step.
Might use it for calculation of your yield.
In RCD.
In RCD.
Correct.
Yeah, there's no yield plan in conventional.
Well, I know, but I mean, your yield plan is basically 48.
40,000 square foot lots, all over the whole property. Now it's not, but it used to be. Show me 40,000 square foot lots all over.
But now what we're saying is 40,000 square foot lots, but you gotta, you can't count that unbuildable land when you're, when you're calculating that yield.
In a conventional subdivision, but we're gonna give them credit for that towards the 20%.
Of common open space.
Common open space.
Yes.
Not to confuse the matter further, but conservation development, 50% of that land is conserved. It's placed in a deep restricted, can't build on it, kinda set aside. And this 20% we're talking about for conventional development, that doesn't necessarily have to be a conservation land. That doesn't have to be something that's restricted on development. It could be a ball field, you can mow all that down.
It's common open space.
As long as you have your tree somewhere else. So just point of clarification for our future listeners. That open space does not equal conservation land.
Good, good call.
I think the goal though is to, we wanna build acre lots, you know?
On quality acre land.
Quality land. That's what we wanna build. So we don't wanna, I don't wanna penalize a builder who wants to build acre lots.
I agree. I agree.
I wanna push them to, to build.
Cause RCD is exploited for what reason it is exploited.
Exactly. You give us something, we give you something.
Yes. Um, so I, I, whether we do adjusted tract to, to stay in alignment with the RCD, I, I have valid argument. I'm, I'm good to support that. Or if we did gross, uh, just as long as we're all on the same page that that primary pulled out. Is getting to go back towards that 20% common open space and they can put picnic tables and do whatever they want back there. Again, this is just strictly common open space.
Yeah. And yeah, and like I said, I think just doing it off of the gross acreage is a whole lot cleaner. But you know, if, if we're trying to align things so that they look the same within our ordinance, then maybe we do, we pull it out and then add it back in. Which, you know, is kinda clunky, but.
I don't know these, I don't know if I want it to look the same. I mean, that's different. That's different.
I was gonna ask the same, get Greg's.
Visuals, I think, are going on my torches.
I, I think the goal we're making today is to have alignment of what we're expecting and to not unexpectedly create some kind of loophole. Where like, oh man, they just tweaked this type amendment and now I can, you know, only set aside 10% but it counts as 40, you know? Which is, I think we've discussed very fairly and then a good conversation. So, uh, do they need to align equally? I think there is a strong, in my experience with these developers, there's a strong consideration. Even before they come to the town on which one they wanna do. So there, I have conversations every day about somebody who's like, hey, I wanna do conservation versus conventional, which one's better? Those don't usually go anywhere. The conversation that goes somewhere is, you know, I've hired a land use attorney to review your conservation subdivision code ordinance. I think we can yield this much out of it. Here's a site plan we have. Can we do a sidewalk now? I think they're doing their homework into these, these code sections in advance. So they're not really weighing, well, should they be one versus the other? They've usually made up their minds as soon as they come to town. So I don't think they necessarily have to be apples to apples in terms of how they read it. It just has to be very clear what our expectations are, um, the, the option they choose.
Good point.
So then let's keep it simple.
Yeah, gross acreage.
Yeah.
And then are you also, now, I, I'm gonna try to word this correctly. Would you, would you say that we should give? If we went adjusted, that we should also make them give additional 20 outside the primary? Cause if they're 10s to 40 or, or you're kinda hitting that maybe we should be getting more?
I think the, the mandate, if you would, is that the council wants that 20% open space that's been debated in the past and that decision's been made.
And they're gonna get it in this, they're gonna get it in this lineup.
So that's, that, that's a tough act for somebody to say, we want acre lots, but you set up, have to set aside 20% still. Um, I feel like that dissuades people from going conventional.
Especially when, when that's what we really want. We really want acre lots, you know, we'll, and we, and, on, on, you know, people that have bad land, they can use conservation. Right? And, and still make, and still get somebody to buy their land, right?
I would, I wouldn't say conservation's all bad. I'm just saying.
No, but.
The way it's been used in the past.
We know what it's used for with tinier lots.
Yeah.
The lower, still get a yield impact on a smaller amount of land. Development costs.
Value of your land is, it, it, it maintains the value of your land.
Yeah.
Because if you have, if you have 30% of your land is bad in an R40 yield, you're gonna have less homes. Now, if you go, if you go conservation, you can build the acreage, you can build the amount of homes you have that the yield plan.
You're getting two per every lot.
Yeah, that the yield plan gives you.
Sometimes three, if you can make the averages work right.
See, I was thinking you're gonna build the same amount, but that's why you've gotta take out that primary conservation land. So guys, that's.
But this would be harder. It'd be harder to put 40,000 square foot lots on eight, on 16 of them on 16 acres. You got road infrastructure easements, but I can guarantee you in RCD that I can get 16, 20,000 square foot lots.
You know, you got a 100 foot buffer too to deal with if you're on a road. Um, you know, that's a, that, that, that's a lot of land depending on the size of the road, you know?
Well, yeah, and also depends on whether you've got a 100 foot frontage on the road or a 50 foot.
That's right.
What's the shape of the lot?
Right.
But I know right now the UDO, it requires a 100 foot buffer, but it, it cannot exceed 15% of I think the gross parcel. So if you've got a lot that's long and not that deep on the road versus one that's shorter and deep.
Yeah, and that just comes down to what you got, right?
Yeah. Again, I'm gonna always argue quality. And now that's what I, I don't want us to pigeonhole something to where you get crap out of what you're trying to do.
I agree. I'm just trying to manage how we get the UDO and that can cover so many.
Yeah.
Odd situations.
Well, I don't know. How many conventionals can, I don't even know. We've seen many conventional come through. It's not, it's a, it's usually the smaller little ones that RCD doesn't even, hard for them to apply to. So if you've got a 100 acre tract, the rarity of seeing a conventional, not covered.
Yeah, well, we've had before, I think the majority of what came through was conservation.
Yeah.
You can do a 12,000 foot lot, you can, you know?
Well, you know, without sewer though, without sewer, it makes it a little difficult to do the conservation.
You can't do conservation really.
So, so that's why you're, you're, you know, in the last, I guess in the last year or so, we did have some more conventional subdivisions because of the septics, you know?
Yeah, and you can, on a, on a conservation subdivision, you can put individual septics in the conservation land.
Yeah, you can use it, right?
Yeah.
We really haven't seen that yet. Having that, I think, uh, the last proposal, I think DLA had some of that, didn't it?
They were doing that, yes.
And then.
They were having a problem, where's land?
Trying to find good land.
Where's land that got hurt?
Right.
And that's the situation that was happening with Morris Farms. Um, Greg and I talked about that. I actually, again, make sure I got my concept line. I'm drawing pictures. And, um, you know, well, the 500 foot cul-de-sac lane, they were gonna go like 1,500 feet to go across the floodplain to pick up three homes.
And then they did that one stub road to the side that went to nowhere that counteracted our cul-de-sac.
Yeah.
Then they put hammerheads in. That's not a.
So they're always gonna find a weakness, but at least right now what they're showing is they maxed that out at 600 feet. So they stopped just before the floodplain. And then there's another lot, they're trying to save some trees. And it was like, I wanna say it was 120,000 square foot lot.
In that corner.
In that corner.
They gave it up too.
And they just said, we'll take that one.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good point. Let me just note that Morris Farms is a, uh, Paul Brothers perspective project. It has not gone through the public participation process fully yet. It's not gone planning board, but because we're in a workshop, I think it's fair to talk about now. We're in a regular discussion meeting, let's probably not talk about that.
Good point, good point.
Just another thing, I, I just wanna clarify on the conventional, in the past, you could draw your lots for yield a certain percentage into the floodplain, right? And this is.
The whole, the whole property can be used.
Now that cannot be done anymore.
That's, that's.
So, so you know, that's another additional shrinkage of what, what can be, what you can yield out of, out of that anyway, so.
Yeah, if you had nine, you could have 9,000 square feet to build a home and you could have 31,000 square feet of floodplain, lakes, steep slopes. Now you can't do that.
Well, again, when we say you can't, to your point of you can't, you're already shrinking it. If I was going to the land and it's in a floodplain, before I submitted, I can submit to FEMA a lo mar by field. And I can go bring some dirt in here, as long as I have a no rise certificate that says what all this that I'm doing, doesn't make that creek rise 1/100 of a foot. I feel, I put my thing into FEMA, they sign back and they're like, you're out of the floodplain.
We would like to dissuade that.
I agree. I agree. But from a developer side, they're gonna say, hey, homeowner Joe Weddington, we need to do this first. And.
UDO used to say, as long as you had your livable areas two feet higher than the defined.
The base flood elevation.
Yeah. And now we're saying you can't have any of that.
Yeah, which is good.
This is where this whole concept started with Mayor Pretend Smith like a year and a half ago.
Yep.
We don't want anybody to be able to build in a floodplain. And we can't do that. We have to say, we can make it really hard to build in a floodplain. Or we can make it so if you build a new subdivision, you can't build in a floodplain. But we can't tell a property owner that if you own a floodplain, your lot is unbuildable.
But our intent of doing this was to protect the current owner.
Yep.
But any with for-profit development, you can't be there.
Yep. And I.
There's, if, if, if your minimum open space is between 20 and 50%, which is really restrictive anyway. Of course you should put that in HOA property rather than private property.
Yes. Yeah.
So can someone summarize here on, uh?
I thought I was gonna take that second, the sentence out, right?
I think that's all we need to do now is just take the second sentence out of, uh, minimum open space B and just leave it at minimum 20% of gross acreage of the track will be required to re, to be retained as common open space.
So gross acreage.
This is for conventional.
Yeah.
Yep.
917E, additional specific requirements for conventional residential.
Yeah, but now here comes the trick. Here comes the, the cartoons we're gonna have to create. How do we put into this that they have got to pull out all this primary conservation at the beginning? We need somewhere in there that they know.
That's why we were using adjusted tract acreage. The intent was being, it's pulled out.
Well, um, we might have to just put something in there that says they could use that as their open space.
So it's here to say at a minimum 20% of the adjusted tract acreage of the track will be required to retain as common open space for the calculation. But then we're saying you can.
No, I think we need to be more deliberate and almost mandate in here a line that says you're gonna pull out.
So this is what, this is the one I got. It says, uh, adjusted tract acreage yield means the total gross tract acreage after excluding the conservation areas as described in section D 917B, which shall be no less than 50% of total tract for a residential conservation development. And no less than 20% for other developments. Primary and secondary conservation area shall be defined. And we gotta find a place to put the definitions, cause right now they're.
Yeah, I.
It's not there.
I, maybe we can talk about that, but I, I submitted something to Greg and again, it was on the backside of the page. Where we have definitions of conservation land. And I've added words in there for primary conservation land, what's that mean? And secondary here, you can see that.
So Steve, what you just read made sense to both conservation and.
Yeah, because that's a definition of adjusted tract acreage yield. You're gonna add both things in there.
But we're not, but we're not using adjusted tract acreage if we.
Well, we don't want to, but then we, we've gotten back to, are we gonna use it, right? Cause the primary conservation rules.
Yeah, but Chris said, Chris said not, Bill said yes. I don't think that gets us back. That's a decision between the two.
Adjusted tract acreage yield is the gross, it's the 20 acres less the four. That's the adjusted tract. That's the definition.
So then you're gonna make him do 20% on the adjusted tract.
I'm just trying to clarify.
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying. If we use that word in that sentence, then we use that definition.
I thought we, I thought we were using the.
Gross.
Gross.
And if we use gross, we now.
We just have to explain, we have to explain, not with adjusted tract acreage. That's, leaving that completely out, we just have to define.
Pulling that out.
Pulling that out.
We have to define primary, we have to define what that is and why it's not buildable. And, and then we have to say that it can't be used, uh, in, in a conventional subdivision, but it can be credited towards the 20%.
So do we have, outside of minimum open space, do we have somewhere in here where it says that they cannot build on unbuildable land?
I, I think that's what we're trying to.
Yeah, that's what we're trying to figure out. That's what this adjusted tract acre yield kind of came in.
So this one definition might solve three chapters worth of headaches. Uh, yeah. Scott's point, I think that's where we're at. Use the gross, but we need to figure out a definition that, or mandate how we pull out primary.
Tell them how to get to what's primary and how much potential do they have on their lot?
And is, uh, primary and secondary definitions in our definitions already?
Uh, kinda.
Well, that'd be another good illustration along with the definition.
This is what I was proposing adding on, and actually I'll tell you what page it is. It's under definitions. I think it's on page 85. Well, it's 85 in, in the hard copy. I'm not sure what it. I had it say, it, right now it says, it has primary and secondary. And what I did, I, I added where it says primary. And what I did, I, I added where it says, primary conservation land means that portion of the track that consists of view sheds, floodplains, wetlands, lakes, ponds, hydric soils, and steep slopes greater than 25%.
You might be able to build on a view shed.
Isn't it, huh?
You might be able to build on a view shed, but it's buildable land, if it's not, you know, bad land.
Well.
The view shed is just for, for the nice, for the view, right? That when you, when you say view shed.
View shed is looking into the land from the road, not looking out.
Has a hundred foot area that we've gotta stay clear of.
Secondary conservation land shall include that portion of the track that consists, and this is definition now, that consists of forest lands, farmland, historic sites. It said steep slopes. I'm saying, oh, that should be moderate slopes.
Cause we have steep slopes in the primary.
Yeah. Steep slopes that are, and it defines that moderate slopes, we should find that as less than 25%. Rock formations and land adjacent to parks. That's the, that would be the. That's just what we can say.
So why, can't we just say in, in no instance are they allowed to build in primary open space or primary?
Primary conservation.
Conservation lands?
Well, that's, that's what we're saying. Well, I think that's the intent of what we're trying to say.
We don't know what it is though.
Well, that's the definition.
He wrote it off, but some of that land could be not bad land.
Then it wouldn't be primary.
Doesn't matter, right. If we, if we label it as primary, then it's primary, regardless of whether or not it's bad land or good land.
Right, so now you're cut, now you're taking more land out.
No.
No, no, it's the same, same intent. So to Scott's point, just sum up a lot simpler is you just can't use it, can't build in it, can't be part of a lot kind of thing. How do we get to that sentence?
Yeah, but if you're saying that it's, uh, land adjacent to parks, I mean, that could be flat, buildable land.
So then take, so then take it out of your primary. If you, if you, if you have a problem with that, then pull that out of the primary. Don't leave it in the primary. We have to come up with whatever we want to put in the primary, needs to be.
It should be unbuildable land.
Or land that we don't want somebody to build on.
Right.
Not necessarily unbuildable, but land that we don't want somebody to build on.
We, we have to define it.
Right, we have to define it.
Right, and, right, so maybe we pull parks out, you know?
Of that definition part.
Right, but that's, that's a, that's a different conversation. We have to, if we wanna go with the gross acreage, then we have to define what they cannot build on. Outside of that, we're, we're good. Numbers, the numbers work out. We just define what we, what they can absolutely not build on.
Inconventional.
Inconventional. And, and then things start becoming simpler. So we just have to, we have to put in verbiage that says, you know, under no circumstances shall, you know, shall these, this, shall the primary concert, primary conservation lands.
But we don't wanna use conservation lands, right? Cause conservation, again, we're in common open space. We don't wanna elude or imply that it's conservation.
Yeah, that's, that's, every, we want them to conserve, set aside. But the true definition of conservation lands is something that you dito over, and it's in this conservation type subdivision.
So, so then all you do is you ditto, you ditto this and make a new definition for primary open space.
That's it. That's great. Primary open space actually.
Use the exact same verbiage for this. It's just, it applies differently.
Primary open space sounds great.
Yeah, I'm just concerned, I don't wanna take more than, you know, I'm worried about taking buildable land, uh, away from a conservation subdivision more than, you know, we could get into a big percentage.
Well, in the, we can, primary open space can maybe not paste all of that definition. Uh, we, we can come to terms on what we want out of that for conventional, but you want it to stay when it's primary conservation, you want it to be in there. And then in, in a conventional, we maybe remove parks or some language in there to just know that our intent is to pull out the.
Unbuildable stuff.
Yep.
We, we have a definition for open space right now.
Do you have a definition?
Primary open space.
I was gonna say, we're gonna have to have a, a primary open space or something else.
And then that's a one sentence thing, back to Scott's point that we've just put in. They look, they see, they pull it.
To figure out what it is.
Right.
And they take it out, and if it's less than 20, they gotta come up with more. If it's more than 20, they're good.
They can say they've got 30%.
It's a deliverable brought to them, basically to the public upfront. It says like, here's the area we shaded out. That's the primary open space. There's no moving this around later. We've clearly defined where this area is per town's definition. This area we're not gonna build on.
Right.
Yep, yep. I think that's our kind of path forward, in my opinion.
If, I mean, if, if we're trying to, if we're trying to keep things simple, I mean, you know, we can lawyer-ese this to death, but if we're, if we're trying to keep it simple so that, so that when, so that subsequent planning boards aren't confused when things come before them, I think keeping it very simple is, is the, is the better option. And then, you know, if we have to make six new definitions to, to make it work, then we make six new definitions that, that make it work. Or one or two, whatever it turns out to be.
Yeah.
You got that back to Greg?
As long as all those definitions are in the same order, that's a voted upon in the same manner. We can do as much as we need to.
Yeah, I mean, we got, I think we're on the right path. We need to, wordsmith, get a, something that we can present as a recommendation, I guess.
Right.
That, that we could all feel comfortable with and then, and then pass it on for this.
Someone that has their arms around, I'm, I'm a little shaky on it, but as long as people are grasping it well, I'm, I'm fine.
Yeah, I think, I, I think I got the intent, yeah.
It's good, and it, we get a separate definition for primary open space affecting concert, uh, uh.
Conventional.
Conventional. We should really change the names, we're so damn close.
I mean, conventional conservation, you try to say it three times.
I think that's good for, for conventional, right? We kinda squared that away.
I think that kinda hammers home what our intent was in conventional.
The other one.
The last thing I would say, I would say this very clearly, if we could change what RCD is in terms of its name, that it's more clear, something to conservation versus a conventional subdivision, that would be great in terms of a zoning map. So we know what types of development is allowed there. That said, there have been things faded, kinda online, and there's campaign promises and other things that we wanna get rid of RCD zoning. And the state of North Carolina down zoning is legal. You cannot do that. You cannot get rid of RCD subdivisions.
Well, we can, we can, we have to have the people who own the land say, yes, you can do it.
Yeah, but who's gonna do that?
Right, nobody's gonna do it.
Yeah.
But I'll just, just be cautious about, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna change all these things to make everything an acre lot. That's not that simple.
Not until you get rid of conditional zoning. About right zoning, done deal.
We got the, uh, the good one fixed up pretty good, and the next one's got a lot of stuff that needs to be addressed, I guess.
What was the next one? The?
Are we gonna talk about conve, uh, conservation? Are we gonna talk about the RCD subdivisions? Because all that primary conservation needs, they, it needs, that all needs, um, definitions and.
Yeah, so I've got, kinda Bill's tweets on that, on the screen, that was part of that. You know, requirements for development, that cheat sheet that he had provided. So he had talked about that adjusted tract acreage yield in 917B. I think we talked about what we want for 917E. It's just, do we wanna tweak this, this section at all?
I think it's on the back of the document I gave you.
I think it's on the front.
And it does have a, a primary conservation land definition in there.
Again, it doesn't have to be exactly like, we're workshop in it, we're coming up with ideas, but if, if, yeah, the direction of, hey, do we wanna roll with what's on the screen, or do we wanna keep more of a theme with 917E, and then come back at our regularly scheduled meeting with those changes. Directing staff to do so, that's what we need to discuss.
So, yes, one part is, I do wanna come back. That 917E, I think we can clean that up next meeting. I think that's, that's a wrap. This one, I think I've already seen this from Bill, and I don't think I was having issues with his changing the thing. I think it was back to, again, we just need to have defined, well-defined definitions. And probably, again, some of these little illustrations that can follow some of this stuff.
Well, it's very helpful, yeah. I think when I, when I put this, I sent it out to the subcommittee.
Yeah, I think I, I've definitely, I don't, I think when I read this, I've read, I just, again, if we had, you know, when you look at his book, you see those illustrations, it helps put two and two together. So I, I don't think it would hurt for us to have, have some illustrations back in, uh, you know, not only adjusted tract acres definition yield, but then have a little brief snippet of an example. Example of your grandson's artwork there kind of thing to pull out primary, show secondary. I mean, in its essence, almost do like the book does.
Yeah, we could go as, as far as to say, primary conservation or primary open space has to be denoted as a national, or has to be denoted in red, you know, and then shows an example of that visual. So that that's the political that they have to.
When the application comes in.
Yeah, yeah.
They'll define primary, secondary.
We're giving you the definitions. We're telling you what we interpret that as. You have to show us that.
Show it on the, on the.
Yield plan, basically.
Yep.
Yeah.
Greg, did you have any recommendations on these, on this wording from a planner's standpoint? Did, did it look like we were?
No, I mean, if we change, you know, gross to adjusted, those are all math things. That's, that's up for the applicant to determine if they, they meet those standards. And then we double check that, and then the planning board, we triple check that. I agree with, um, Bill's section here on identifying what's the priority and, you know, moving the slopes around. We, we wanna set aside those, those super steep slopes. So we wanna identify kind of these secondary areas as, as other things. Uh, no strong recommendations. I'm, I'm looking for something that we all agree upon. So if it's, if I wanted it to be, if I wanted the slopes to be 12 instead of 10, it's like, I, I'm not, that's not a hell of a month's time.
Nah, I'm just more like, do we got enough language in here? Uh, does, once we add some illustrations to this, does this kinda bring this home?
I've said the word a couple times. I, I want the deliverable. I want the definition, and I want the deliverable for staff interpretation. You know, when a guy says, I'm submitting an application, what does this definition mean? I can say, right here, this is what I interpret that as, what my planning board interprets that as. Here's a visual example of how I want you to show that. And then when I get a bad application, which happens all the time, I could say, you did not draw it the way that our visual exhibit shows. We do that.
So, quick question. Do we have secondary conservation? Cause it, it's not in our.
Yeah, that's, that's kinda, that's a, that's a good point. That's kinda what we said is like, that's the other stuff, but we haven't talked about what the other stuff exactly is.
Speak, so honestly, cause it, what I, what I have a little hard time flowing is, we talk about the priority of the conservation lands in C. And then E, we define the primary conservation lands, but we don't necessarily, they're not, does that mean the tier A, tier B, and tier C in C are secondary conservation lands?
Right.
I mean, so, to, to me, it's a, it's a little disjointed.
No, that tier A, B, and C should be primary, correct? With all the rocks and all the unusual and then.
No, like, like tier A, you see forest lands.
Oh, no, I was reading that different. I was thinking that was, I might need, I might need glasses.
We have, we have a definition of secondary conservation land.
Where, where is it?
Is that on page 85, that under definitions, it is conservation land means a portion of a track that is set aside for permanent and perpetual protection as required by this UDO. Then it talks about primary conservation. Primary conservation land means that portion of a track that consists of floodplains, wetlands, lakes, ponds, hydric soils, and then I added in there, steep slopes. And then it talks about secondary conservation land shall include that portion of a track that consists of forest land, farmland, historic sites. And then I took out steep slopes and put in moderate slopes, rock formations and land adjacent to parks. So we have definitions in there now. All I was proposing, we adjust the, um, the slopes. And I just went with the 25% because I'm assuming sometime in the past, planning boards have wrestled with what percent of slopes. I didn't wanna rehash that one.
So if, if I were setting it up, I would put the primary conservation land on top, make that C, and then it would be the priority of secondary conservation lands would be really what I, would C would be.
Yeah, we're, we're almost replacing this section. So this priority of conservation lands section is like, okay, if you're Joe Engineer and you're laying this out, we want you to start here and then go over here and make an interpretation here. It's fairly subjective for them to decide what they wanna prioritize. This is a guide for them. When we're, now that we're more strongly defining primary versus secondary lands, it's not a guide, it's requirements. And so, uh, if we have these stronger definitions, we're saying, you know, I don't care how you interpret the section C of what you're prioritizing. We're telling you what the primary and secondary lands are. You have to show them.
Cause that there is all, the way we've been discussing it as secondary conservation.
Right, so, so we're not gonna, we're not, we don't need to tier it, or we're not gonna tier it anymore? We're just gonna call all of that secondary conservation?
That's what I would think. That's why I took out the 25% because that flops it into the primary.
Correct, but you, I mean, if it's tiered, there's obviously things that are more important to the town. Even within, instead of going primary, secondary, tertiary, whatever, quarter, whatever. You know, you're, you're tiering your, your secondary, which we may still want to do. Or do we just, in, in any respect, I think you put primary on top of it.
Right.
Because that's the most important. And then you say, and then I would say it's the priority of secondary conservation lands, or just take it out as tiers and just say secondary.
Yeah, I'm following.
Yeah, I'm following. Still don't know if it makes that big of a, on the tiers. Cause again, if you took out the steep slope, you've still got a priority for secondary.
We prefer forest lands. We also prefer, even though you require a buffer, you can put more conservation land up there. So your, your view shed from the thoroughfare, that's what, uh, at the corner of Weddington, Matthew, Logan, Providence.
I mean.
That's so set back, that's all conservation land up front.
I, I'm, I'm fine with it being tiered. I, I actually do think that you probably have, you know, not just primary and secondary, but, you know, you've got this within the secondary. I'm just saying to, to client, to kind of clean it up, I would think that you would put the primary conservation lands on top because it is primary. And then just because, again, similar words, you're using priority and primary are kind of back to back. So priority of secondary conservation lands.
I'm following you.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. On, on primary conservation land, if I understand it, there is, there is no priority.
It's all, right.
It's all these.
Cause it's all, you're.
All inclusive. It's not this one versus this one versus.
Right, you're pulling it out anyway. It's coming out regardless if it's primary. But, you know, in secondary, if they had, you know, if we had the choice between them using the moderate slope, one as part of their conservation, or you know, the forest land, we would prefer that they use the forest land, which I think with our tree ordinance would kind of dictate that anyway, but.
Should that just say priority of.
Secondary.
Secondary conservation land.
Yeah.
I would kinda say that at the very least, to, to Scott's point, cause priority, primary, I mean, we're right at the, I'm reading it, and it doesn't in this paragraph say secondary.
Right.
I think he did that. I think he did that. That cleared it up. And then like you say, primary is an absolute. There is no.
Yeah.
Prefer you do this, then this, then this. It's, it's all.
Yeah. Cause I mean, obviously they're going to have the discussion with us eventually, but somebody could, you know, read through this and say, oh, well their priority is, is, you know, view sheds. So I'm just going to put all of my, regardless of primary, I'm just going to put all of my, you know, conservation in the view shed. And then we'll go back and say, no, we really need the primary out first. So just kind of, it makes it, again, I think it, it makes it clearer and, and easier to follow.
Yeah. And then if you do, the secondary sounds great, but then where do we fall in line at the end of this to put some illustrations, some like exhibits? Or do we put exhibits after? Like a, like for instance, C, when we get to the bottom of it, do we want to show exhibits in C of what this would look like as far as an illustration?
We have that flexibility, the kind of the limited visually that we have now are kind of put at the end of the theme or section. So.
That's what I was hoping. That actually, I would feel better.
So our visual A would kind of be at the end of, of, you know, D I seven D B or the.
Yes, cool. I think that's what I'm, pattern wise, that's what I'm used to seeing. Cool.
Just as long as they're labeled.
Yes.
Appropriately.
Yeah. And once they're in there, you might find that you want to add an exhibit A to the paragraph or something that once we've had a little bit of.
You could hyperlink it too, right? So that if, as you're reading it, if you're like, huh, I wonder what that looks like. You'd be able to, you could click it and then that would take you to the, to the picture.
Yeah. And I've gotten to where, man, if you print it out, Bill, you're not going to be on the right page. But if you get in here and you just click the table of contents, you're, it's rock star.
We had that discussion at the planning board.
Well, no, my printed out version and then I go to this, but I've gotten to where now I just hit that hyperlink stuff.
Working on the macros, right? Yeah. If you go and click on it, it takes you to the right page.
I agree. But if you do the page.
I'm doing it this way. Cause I would do a search.
On PDF.
Yeah.
That's what I do.
And then I thought, well, wait a minute.
But it's not, it doesn't quite get the same, but gotcha. But yeah, so I guess on this one, we just want to add a little bit of language on C, the secondary, to put the word in there, secondary, take out Bill's steep slopes. Add your adjusted track acreage. Down at the bottom where you've got E, you've, uh, you kind of just struck through and came up with a new one, didn't you?
I just tried to get the same information, but yeah, can you put that up there? Will it show?
This is from your packet. So I think we still might be missing that second page.
It's, it should be on, the whole thing's on the back of there, Scott, I think, isn't it? You know, it has a lot of, I mean, to me, they're flowery words. Human life and property protection, yada, yada, yada.
So you basically are wanting to say primary conservation lands and then you're wanting to go into because of their extreme limitations, streams, valleys, swells, submerged lands, flood plains, steep slopes greater than twenty-five percent and other lowland areas warrant designation as primary conservation lands. They may also require adjoining buffer lands to be included as primary conservation lands. This is to be determined by an analysis of the protection requirements as determined. By the planning board on a case by case, upon finding that designation of such as primary conservation land would have significant long-term environmental impact. I would, might have to read that one a few times to know if I'm understanding.
Well, I think thematically, we're.
I get where he's at.
We want to say that anywhere in these sections, let's say it's either B or E, we'll, we'll use E as an example. We move the definition and concept of primary conservation land to the top of the page and say, this is what we're looking for first. Here's how it's defined. Here's how you define all the other stuff or how we prioritize other things. End of section, here's a visual exhibit of how you should demarcate primary lands on your yield plan before you submit your application to us.
That, you, I couldn't have put it that eloquently. Yes.
When the attorney comes in, we want to do, this red section is primary conservation land. This green section is secondary conservation land. And the other section is where we're built.
Yeah. I mean, we've, we've got yield plans before and I do think that they were adequate for UDO standards. But if they would say, you know, we can yield fifteen lots out of this thing. And then you see the backyard of that one yielding house and it's got, it's five hundred and change, a hundred feet. And it's like, okay, technically you could yield the house out of that front, but I want you to show that a lot more clearly. So that we can contest that or say, you know, is that really appropriate for a private lot? Should that be common open space?
Cause if it falls off quickly, greater than twenty-five percent, it's going to be primary anyway, right? So let me, as an example, when Keystone came through um, last week, a couple of weeks ago. If someone like that came through in the future, everything was labeled, I think, as open space. Now, wouldn't it have, here's primary conservation land, the flood plain in the back, that kind of stuff. Here's secondary conservation land. And then here's where I'm building. And oh, by the way, that primary is X acres. The secondary is X acres. Is that what, that's what we want to get to when it comes before the planning board.
Yeah. Our, our chairman's a surveyor. He's used to delineating those areas.
And I would say this too. I know I missed that special meeting. But I saw that packet. That is what they should have led with in the very beginning. That would have been a totally different ballgame versus what they gave us at the very beginning. The second time?
Yeah.
That's what I was expecting to see the first time.
Yeah.
Uh, and I don't know if y'all know that I call it the differences, which is just my thing, but definitely, uh, the six pages on the first was a, was a weak showing versus that, that second packet. So that was more of what I'm in line with seeing with what we had intent for seeing with two B. And then, you know, hashing out a couple of little things through it. That's what I felt like would be a productive, productive submittal and meeting. But yeah, so I guess we've kind of got some marching orders on those to, to make a stab. I think we could have probably both of these cleaned up minus, how do we want to handle illustrations? Can we leave that for staff to?
Yes. Yeah.
So we can make these things that we want to make recommendations, leave it to staff to handle the illustrations and then.
I can give you a doodle and then by the time it goes to the town council for ordinance, that's actually what's going to be inserted into text.
So do, so do you want us to take a shot at writing the text or do you have enough information for you to write the text?
I, I think you can go either way, Bill. I trust you in terms of your text amendments so far. If you want to take a stab out of that, is, is my job to do it. That said, I'm out of town for the next week and a half. So it may not be ready for the next planning board meeting, which is a month or is a week earlier.
And Bill was always reading and eating the UDO.
Well, I was, I'll be honest with you. I was looking to have Greg do it because I'm a little unsure.
That will, let us, we can.
We can get together or why don't you try, when are you going out of town?
Tonight.
Our morning.
So I would say let's, let's, Bill, if you want to just send what you've had to make a stab. And then what we can do is if I'm not mistaken, we can email it individually, right? And then let us make sure individual, we just pass it along. Uh, if you send what you've got, I can, I can go from there.
Or three can get together and we're legit. We just can't do four.
I'd just say we do give us that first stab these next few days. And then when Greg gets back before meeting Greg, if you read it and you used to like, look guys, this, this and this. That's, that's when he kind of is our final edit.
Okay. I'm on really shaky ground here, but I'll put together what I think.
Let's see, but that's, that's the thing. Even if you are on shaky ground, then we're going to, when you send it out, we're going to say, no, you're on shaky, this is what, this is what we meant.
Well, I think, I, I think we all agree on the concept. They're just now getting into words and I'll take a shot at it.
Yeah.
So some of the things I noted, uh, in the records, as I'm an acting secretary for this workshop is, uh, you know, we don't necessarily have to align with the conservation developments. It's a different type of project.
Right.
We're looking for some kind of deliverable, like a yield plan for these acre lots. We don't want to penalize people for building acre lots because that's the kind of preference of our citizenry. If we want more of these types of developments because there have been certain loopholes in RCD developments. As I stated, our city developments cannot go away because. Too down building.
Right.
We talked about the definition of gross acreage versus adjusted tract acreage. And using that gross acreage versus having alignment of the two definitions, we were going to stick with the gross. Uh, we were going to remove that second sentence. And D nine seventeen E was talking about the no more than fifty percent.
Yep.
Um, rule. We're going to add a bunch more definitions to define them. Primarily, we're going to define primary and we're going to emphasize that at the beginning of each section. As the deliverable we are searching for, um, the other things, these priority of conservation lands, et cetera. These are priorities for what you're setting aside, but these are more guidelines where our primary secondaries are, are strict definitions that we will be searching searching for them to, uh, meet that definition. We effectively are saying, at no instance, primary land shall be built upon. There's an expectation if you define something as primary, you're not building any stuff on it. No structures, not really any development. Uh, we don't want you to really degrade there.
Yeah, we want to.
Serve there.
Correct.
So we're showing, we're asking them to show buildable and unbuildable land effectively, which is what council's goals were for this. Conservation lands, when done in this type of development, will be defined as primary open space. They're effectively the same thing in terms of being set aside. They have different legal ramifications from how they're plotted and how they're filed with the rest of the conservation lands cannot be disturbed. Primary open spaces land, we're asking you to say that you're not going to be disturbed. Primary is identified as a priority and then the other sections of code. And then we will provide exhibits at the end of each of these sections that show the deliverable we are looking for. Whether it's a definition of saying you have to hash it out and put it in red, you'll have a clear exhibit of what item they are providing to the planning board for you guys to review compliantly.
That was money.
Can I get a copy of that? I might be able to figure some of that out.
You'll watch back and hit pause and hit pause and hit pause. No, that was, that was, that was it. That summed it all up. I think for us guys on making these languages, going to just kind of copy and paste to a degree, the primary open space definition. To Steve's point, take out some of the stuff that, uh, may not, and may not have wanted in a normal against parks, stuff like that. But we can get him back some burbage after we.
I'm not sure what primary open space is. I know we've talked about it.
It's the primary conservation area, but in a conventional subdivision, it's not conservation. So it'll be primary open space. We're going to set it aside.
Buildable really was spoken, that's the base of it. We don't use the term conservation.
Correct. We're going to use primary open space. That way we's.
Right.
Hitting on the same similar bill.
We have primary being the, the key, whatever you want to call it after that.
Yep. Yep.
Primary open space in R forty is similar to primary conservation in.
Correct.
RCD.
We just may take a little bit of the words out of the definition of primary conservation.
Yeah.
To get it. And then we'll let Greg give a file edit, but.
We have different town expectations for each.
Correct.
We don't want to quite treat them apples to apples.
Yeah.
We have the same ecological goals for both.
Two separate approaches. We're just going to define how they are with some clarity. Because I expressed some concern as I, I was looking at some subdivisions we've done. I actually went into the deeds office in Monroe. And we have some of our newer ones out there. The older ones say conservation land. The newer ones say open space.
Well, but yeah, but I think Karen said that that might be a function of the deed office, not having them labeled correctly.
Well, that's why I went into the deed office and pulled it all up.
Yeah, but didn't she say, she said we need, she said you really need to check someplace else.
It's, the plat can say one thing, but if you're going into conservation, there's a totally separate.
There's CCRs.
Yeah. Instruments that.
That was my only concern. I couldn't find that.
Yep. Uh, but ideally we would want that wording on a plat, ideally.
Yeah.
Um, just makes it easier for everybody. Cause again, open space has a different connotation to what I can do in it versus conservation. Uh, real quick, I'm not going to try to keep y'all much longer, but we, Toll had brought up on our septic that, uh, in two B, if you'll pull up two B real quick. They made a great point. And, uh, we, when we were doing two B, the subcommittee, we met with the state and the county about this septic stuff. And although she told us about all the third party uses, she didn't go in as detail as the actual third party engineers did. There's appendix two B. And we've saying there about the improvement permit. But there, that comes, the improvement permit in there comes from the county and can only be issued by the county. There is a third party engineering company that, that can do it, that issues the same exact permit. This, it's actually, they were going to tell you it's equivalent. It's the A two or A five. But it's a higher standard of, uh, permit than what, so the improvement permit is, is hey, my daughter is eighteen years old. She just got a job, Union County. She goes out and assesses your property for septic. She looks at a couple of things on the checklist. Boom, you got septic. Here's your thing. You move on. That's the truth. These are soil scientists and have their license behind it. So they can't just do that. So they have to go up three more degrees to say what it is bedrooms. And so they were wanting to say, if we could either change that or recommend, they're going to, they're going to meet with the mayor and them too as well. And add in their third party equivalent to some type of thing to that A two permit that they do. And what they do is with their A two permit is send it to the county, county signs it and issues. It's not the improvement permit per se. It's going to be their A two. Uh, and a lot of the developers use engineering, outside engineering because of their time.
Sure.
The county is like.
If the county sees an A two permit coming through, they pretty much rubber stamp it.
Yes, it's, they, that's, and the, the engineer, if we wanted to talk, I think he was kind of open to talking to us. But I wanted him, them to get with the mayor and let the council members hear from him. Cause some of this just comes down to education. I didn't know it went this deep. We talked to that state and county lady and, and she kept saying from her end, that improvement permit, which is, can only be issued from the county. State lady kept saying about the third party engineers. But they didn't bring up this other permit. And this guy, uh, that was with the engineering firm did. And again, it's, it's one of those things. If somebody's got a seal behind it, there's a little bit more education behind what they're doing. And no, versus my daughter coming out to tell y'all, we can do septic through the county and.
So you're saying we need that and.
Well, they're going to meet with the mayor. We'll see what they all say. But I just wanted to bring that up, that there is an equivalent or even a higher standard than that improvement permit.
My, my only question would be, is there ever an instance where the county doesn't issue their improvement permit? If somebody has an A two permit.
It's a good question for them, right?
Cause that, that, I mean, that would be, that, that would be a, a catch.
Yep. That, that'd be a good question for them. Uh, but we'll let them see if, if the mayor and council says they want to, this is something for them and they ask us to, to review that again, then we'll review it. Otherwise they can go get the improvement permit and, and just know it's of, I don't know, that, all of it's going to be a, an expense to a developer, but they can.
Well, they would have to, would, wouldn't they have to have that anyway? Even if it's rubber stamped by the, by the county.
Yeah, you're either going to come the equivalent of A two permit or you're going to have an improvement permit. But we don't say anything but the improvement permit. So we don't even lend the option of having a, a higher, a third party company do it.
Well, I think most of it's done that way. I mean, because the county gets backed up. I don't.
Yeah. Well, that's when we were talking to the county. I mean, she was absolutely like, we're so slow that most people have their own engineers. They do it, send it, we go. But they kept using the word improvement permit from the county. County can't issue the A two. County can't issue the A two permit, but they're equivalent technically, one's just a.
So is it just county approval, does it, as long as they have county approval?
Well, the county or an engineered approval that the county accepts as a.
Right, so the bottom line would be the county would accept that, as long as they have county approval, which would be.
Back to Scott's point, we want to make sure that is something that is accepted, that'd be a good question for council to ask them when they, when they meet.
Because my thought process would be that they're just trying to get it quicker. They're going to, they need the, they need the improvement permit from the county eventually, and 99.9% of the A two permits get that, but once they have that, they want to be able to come to us and say, we don't have to wait three months for the improvement permit from the county. I think is probably where we're going.
That's where they're headed.
Yeah.
That was their whole thing.
Right, so.
Are all A twos accepted by the county?
Right, and if, and if the answer to that is no, then I think you would want to stick with
Improvement.
With the improvement permit, if the answer to that from the county would be the answering party to that would be, yes, we've never seen one that hasn't been, then maybe we could go with A two.
Yeah.
But that definitely would, uh, you know, again, you know, I don't, I'm, I'm perfectly fine, as long as, as long as the developers know what we are asking of them, I'm fine with having them jump through as many hoops. As long as they know what the hoops are, so.
And that's what I think they were just trying to clear up with us, uh, was that we don't, we only allude to the county permit. So there is verbatim, no word of, of, of going to the, to the engineer.
I think most developers, at least I know of my subdivision, again, they're trying to get it done and get it through, so they hired their own engineers to do the work, then they submit it to the county, and then the county would say, yeah, this is, this is good.
Well, in our experience in surveying rural areas that use the county to do septic, get their septic area delineated, right? They go out there, they build their house, they get a septic, and it's not even eight months after everything's active, and the septic failed because it was just, they looked at topography, they looked at a little bit of soil type, whereas these.
Eighteen year olds.
Yeah, these engineering firms, you know, that happens, his insurance is about to step in and pay for whatever he's sealed and, and messed up, so to some degree, I get the developer wanting someone on the, like, you botched this, we're putting a claim into your insurance because the county is like their own sovereign nation.
The A two permit seems to be what we want to get to.
Well, I don't know if we want to force them to use it because the county is still, but I would say improvement permit or equivalent A two permit or something.
That's a good word.
But again, let's let, I just wanted to bring that up, that, that I got a little bit of education the other day from them, and that I know they're going to talk to council and we'll see where it goes, but uh, it's definitely, it was definitely kind of eye opening because all we did was talk to the state and county. We didn't, you know, now in hindsight, I was like, man, we should have probably talked to a soil scientist. We were getting all this information. So.
We're the expert, we're the board at the point, so I'll hand that to you.
Yeah. Well, anything else?
I would like to raise one topic, and I'll make it real quick, if you missed the meeting, is Keystone, the planning board got into a real discussion over community green. You know, we're saying for an R C D subdivision, conservation subdivision, you need a 10,000 square foot community green. And this one doesn't have one, and correct me if I'm wrong, Greg, but when they first came through, they didn't have community green, but they didn't have a walking trail either, right?
Correct, there was no walking trail previously.
So then they came through and said, oh, I, we screwed that one up, so they put in a walking trail in lieu of community green. And I read the U D O as a walking trail, and actually, we listed on there as an amenity. You want to do it great, it's not required. And, um, anyway, planning board didn't, we all didn't agree on that. And so my concern, this was exactly, went back and looked at it. When we, when we tighten up the U D O, we're expecting, part of the reason we do that is to get the developer to be more creative as they lay out their, their lots versus here's a road, here's a grid, here's. I don't think they even thought about that, their, their lots, and again, there's only 12 lots, but their lots exceeded the 20,000 square foot required. In my mind, if they planned that correctly, they actually could have gotten the lots a little bit smaller, still meet the 12,000, and they would have picked up, um, 6,000 square feet of land. So they'd need another 4,000 to get the, the green. And that's basically a 60 by 60, 60 by 65. And in my mind, we say is required to the greatest extent possible. That's the out, because we try to help these guys, and they jump all over those outs. So at a future meeting, I'd like to bring up, we revisit that thing? Because if our intent is, it doesn't do us any good to tighten up these ordinances, and then we have the outs. I mean, we need them because they're, they're going to be those.
I'm assuming the outs was, is they wanted the walking trail in lieu of the.
Sure, well, the, the, I think the, the, the biggest issue was that the common, the open space was going to take a lot away, or take one down, down to 11 lots. So.
But I think if they'd planned ahead of time, that might not be the case. You know, they were, they were saying, well, we have to put it here, the land falls off 15 feet, we're going to have to take a bunch of trees out.
So this goes back to what I was saying, where I think we need to have a meeting where they come in with their preliminary plat so that we can look at, and not the charrette where we're out on site and all that, but a, a real planning board meeting where they're come in with a preliminary plat, where we can go through that and say, well, you know, we really, we know it doesn't say you have to, but in this instance, you know, you really need to plan for it because, and that gives, that gives us time to look at the fact that they have larger lots, although I think council wants larger lots, so bear that in mind as you're, as you're taking out, you know.
And not only that, the size.
Well, that's a good, because I mean, if you're giving us good tit for tat, we're getting something out of it, I don't want to be so hell bent that we gotta, we can't get out of our box, but.
My concern is that, you know, you're going from seven is the minimum. So if you have a seven, eight or nine lot subdivision, now you want to require an open space, that's going to drop that down even more. So, I mean, at the small end, I think it's worded properly, it's as required, right? But maybe when you get into the bigger R C D developments, 25s to 35s, maybe it should be required. So, you know, so we, so we leave ourselves a little bit of out on those small subdivisions who are going to have a tough time paying that H O A bill, you know, when you got 12 houses.
And, and that's why we leave the outs, because when you write a U D O, it's got to cover every situation. And I'm fine with it, maybe I'm.
Now, again, it's us to negotiate our terms on when it is going to be required and steadfast, or when we're getting some kind of concession that, okay.
Right, and I'll give you Weddington Glen as an example, I don't believe they have a common area over there, or, or like open, what do you call it, an open?
The green space, yeah.
They don't have 35 some homes.
There's, there's one that.
They don't have one.
There's one at Enclave at Maxley.
They have one.
Yeah, it's, it's one in 1.3 acres.
Yeah, it's a pretty good sized one, and they're having a lot of issues with it. And that's not, but that's nothing to do with the, the O U, U D O.
I just, maybe I feel like I'm trying to hold our developers to a higher standard.
Well, in some ways.
Situation, but the fact that this is one we've worked with in the past, that I remember when they made their show and tell at the council, they said, well, do you want us to meet the tree ordinance? Or the, the buffer ordinance? Well, to me, that sends up a red flag, it's not either or.
Right.
And we struggled with them on a, on a buffer on another subdivision, so it was kind of, I want to say old school, where it used to be they would tell the town what they were going to do.
Oh, no, he definitely came in with six pages when I was the first one here, and said, this is all the planning board needs to see.
Yeah, so I, I mean, I just, I just feel we.
That's true, you know, that, that subdivision has a hundred foot buffer, and I'm not taking up for the guy, I'm just saying there's a hundred foot buffer that we want landscaped in front of that thing. That, and you want a, you want a, uh, an open space which takes a lot away, a common green which has to be maintained, they're going to have to maintain streetlights, they're going to have to maintain the, the stormwater, right?
They don't maintain, the H, what, you're talking about the H O A?
On 12 homes.
Yeah.
So, you know, you're talking about 2,000 a year as an H O A bill.
Yeah.
I'm going to summarize that in the very politically correct way. I'm going to say that rather than revisit a topic that y'all have already voted on, and there's a pending town council issue that, that, uh, that code issue is a should, could, maybe we should revise as tech amendment as a future, that that be a trigger with a certain number of lots. So it may not be very fair for somebody with seven lots to build a neighborhood green, if somebody with 40 lots is not more reasonable than that.
And there's a lot more resource available to take care of all that stuff, so.
Well, that said, I got one more question for, I guess, Greg, council. How does it work now down to planning board? Is it just we keep operating the way we operate until we get a seat filled?
Yes.
Yes, so that person basically has to be nominated by a councilman, and so until they do that, we have a.
But there's nothing stops us from doing what we do.
Yeah.
So how's it affect?
It's all your big work.
Okay.
Now, you got the other two boards that, that affects too, right? You got the adjustment board and the historical board, and that adjustment would be important.
Yeah, but I.
We got, we got people like.
Well, they had alternates.
Right, there's two, you and I are the alternate ethic on that anyway, so one of us would just rotate on our place.
Okay.
As long as the, the number required for a majority doesn't change, then you should still be able to conduct business as usual.
But with one down, everybody attending is of the essence to make sure we.
Well, we're missing two now.
I know.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what, but I wouldn't want it to be. I'd like to see if we could, again, I get it, we're all traveling, doing things, but as full as possible, as much as we can. So.
Mr. Chairman, are you looking for a motion?
I would love a motion.
I'm making a motion into a jern.
So, or second.
Favor.
In favor.
Jern, thank you guys.
Oh, really? That wasn't bad, that was an hour and 40 minutes.